Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Today is June 28, 2021, and this is the legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. So I'll call the meeting to order. At this time, we will have Chaplain Cooper of New Dimensions Family Ministries, and he's also the Salisbury Fire Department Volunteer Firefighter and Chaplain to give our invocation.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, first to say thank you. God, we ask you to bless this meeting this evening. Bless each and every person that's gathered here. Bless our families, bless our friends, bless our loved ones. And God, we just ask you to be with each and every one of us tonight and forever. And now, God, I ask you to be with the board as they conduct the business of the city of Salisbury. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we'll stand and perform the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just.
We will have a special presentation. Ms. Nichols, our City Clerk, is going to make a presentation.
Good evening. Diane, could you join me, please? For those who don't know, Diane is retiring. This Wednesday will be her last day, and we have a couple of things for you. Thank you. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Diane K. Carter, MMC from the city of Salisbury, for her outstanding, dedicated service and commitment to excellence as Assistant City Clerk for the past nine years. We wish her all the very best for an enjoyable and well-deserved retirement on June 30, 2021, after 23 years of municipal government work. We will miss you. I think everybody who's ever worked with Diane has valued her judgment and never doubted her commitment to the city, and we're just sorry to see you go, but so very happy for you. We have some...
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Thank you all, council, staff, coworkers, friends, family that's on Zoom. It has been a pleasure to be part of the city of Salisbury Work Family. I'm not leaving town, so I hope to cross paths with all of you sometime in the near future, down the road, whenever that is. But thank you so much. I truly will miss Kim. We have had a wonderful, wonderful work relationship, and I know Julie, who is my successor, she and Kim will do great things as well. So thank you all again very, very much. I appreciate it.
Jack, would you like to say something?
Yeah, one of the...I'm losing one of my partners. Kim and Diane have been my right hand and left hand, and they've kept me out of trouble. I said this at her luncheon, but it's worth repeating. She faithfully has served us and kept us, kept me especially, out of trouble. But I truly appreciate the fact that for a number of years while I was president of the Lower Eastern Shore Mayor's Association, she ran the thing. Let's be honest, and she did a magnificent job. I will truly miss you, Diane, and I wish you the best, and I definitely hope that you come and see us often. Thank you.
Thank you.
Angela, would you like to say something?
You're on mute.
Okay. Diane, I know I can't see you in person. I'm sorry about that this evening. But I tell you what, you're the sweetest of sweets. There's never a call you didn't take or guidance you didn't give. We're going to miss you, but we certainly do wish you all the best in retirement.
Diane, we're going to miss you so much. I know I've only been here for a little over a year, but, you know, you have been so helpful every time I've had a question. And, you know, you're fantastic, and I really hope you have a very, very relaxing retirement.
And I'll just add, like everybody else, we love you. We're going to miss you. During this course of the past six years that I've been here, we found out that Diane and I share a great-great-grandfather, so she's a cousin. But it's just welcome, even before we knew that, welcome to me into the family. And like Jack said, they keep us on track. If we have questions, they're always available to answer in a wealth of knowledge from many years of experience. And it's been very, it's been very wonderful working with you, and wish you the best in your retirement.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we'll get back to normal business. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt a legislative agenda.
They're moved.
Second.
Call for the question. All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Nichols?
Good evening again. On the consent agenda, we have one item, and I broke the wrong sheet. Resolution Number 3111 declaring that 106 North Division Street LLC is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for their property located at 106 North Division Street in Salisbury. And that's it.
Any questions or comments?
None.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2669, I'm sorry, for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Who is...we don't have anybody from...this is a...oh, this is an ordinance. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we've got the Resolution...
Oh, that wasn't on my...
1013.
Oh, I'm sorry. Resolution Number 3112. Is there anybody from the administration?
Here, I'm here. If you want to skip me, I see. I understand.
I didn't even see you, and it's Julia's picture that's up there, so...Mr. Kitsrow?
I know. I think I'm frozen. There we go.
There he is.
Oh.
Our Resolution Number 3112, a resolution of the city of Salisbury making a declaration of official intent regarding reimbursement from proceeds of a future borrowing project. Expenditures made in connection with a project identified as apparatus replacement aerial ladder. Whereas the city of Salisbury Municipal Corporation, the state of Maryland, the city is in process of undertaking a project identifying as apparatus replacement aerial ladder project. And whereas the city anticipates borrowing money for cost of the project, such borrowing to be evidenced by one or more series of general obligation bonds or other evidences of indebtedness collectively or individually by series, the bonds to be issued by the city. And whereas the city reasonably expects to spend city funds on the cost of the project prior to issuance of the bonds or an interim financing incurred by the city in anticipation of the bonds, and to reimburse the city from proceeds of the bonds for all of the portions of such previously paid costs of the project, and/or to use bonds proceeds to refinance all or portions of interim borrowing incurred by the city that is applied to reimbursement, reimburse the city from prior project expenditures. And whereas Section 1.150-2 of the U.S. Treasury Regulations, the reimbursement regulations, provides that local governments funding original expenditures intended to be reimbursed from the proceeds of obligations must make a declaration of official intent in order to qualify such original expenditures for reimbursement from a reimbursement bond, all within the meaning of the reimbursement regulations. And whereas the city is an issuer for purposes of the reimbursement regulations and wishes to adopt the resolution, the purpose of evidence, the clear and official intent of the city to reimburse for reimbursement bond proceeds, being the bonds or an interim financing incurred in anticipation of the bonds, originally expenditures made in connection with the project. Section 1, now therefore be resolved by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that (a) the recitals to this resolution are deemed to be substantial part of this resolution and incorporated by reference herein, and capitalized terms defined in the recitals to this resolution, and otherwise defined herein will have the meanings given to such terms in this recital here, too. (b) The name used for the project in the resolution is a name by which such project is generally identified in the applicable budget materials of the city for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, is hereby expressly recognized that the expenditures for the project and/or issuance of the bonds or interim financing incurred in anticipation of any bonds may incur in a fiscal year subsequent to fiscal year 2022. Revenant in this resolution to the project shall be deemed to (a) be (b) to such project as may be referred by (c) may not have the exact same names. An applicable steady budget, budgetary materials, including the Indy Capital Improvement Plan, and (2) include any changes to the scope of activities of the project and/or the name of the project made by the city in accordance with the applicable law, including without limitation, in future fiscal years. Revenant in this resolution to cost of the project shall be deemed to be the expenditures that constitute capital expenditures, and to the extent applicable, the amount of the borrowing related to the project and capital expenditure. Section 2, and be it further resolved that in accordance with the reimbursement regulations, the city hereby makes the declaration that through new expectation to expend money on cost of the project prior to the issuance of the bonds or any of the interim financing incurred in anticipation of the bonds, and to use proceeds of the bonds or such interim financing. With such bonds and/or interim financing would qualify as a reimbursement bond for purposes of the reimbursement regulation to reimburse all or important such original expenditures. This resolution is intended to be a reimbursement official intent within the meaning of the reimbursement regulation. Section 3, and be it further resolved that the maximum principal amount of the bond to be issued for the project and the maximum principal amount of any interim financing to be incurred by the city in anticipation of the bonds incurred for the project is $1,400,000 each. Section 4, and be it further resolved that this resolution shall become effective upon the council and approval of the mayor pursuant to the charter section. That's it.
Thank you, Andy. Any questions or comments from the council?
None.
No questions.
At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the chair votes aye, so that's four to nothing. Thank you, Mr. Kitsrow. All right. Now entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2669 for second reading.
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, Mr. Vice President. Good evening, members of the council, both in person and virtually. Ordinance Number 2669, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to establish a program to encourage hotel and large-scale residential development and revitalization in the downtown area of Salisbury to be known as the Horizon Program. Whereas the city seeks to incentivize the construction and expansion of business interests in and near the downtown area, specifically the Central Business Zoning District and Riverfront Redevelopment Zoning Districts, as adopted via Resolution Number 2600 in the envisioned Salisbury Master Plan, in order to increase the amount of economic activity in these areas. And whereas implementing the hotel or residential incentive zone, Horizon Program, will encourage financially responsible businesses to construct or expand hotel and residential business interests in these areas, which may further result in positive economic and social effects, including but not limited to increases in cultural activity opportunities, employment opportunities, and business activities. Whereas the city, through the Department of Infrastructure and Development, shall process applications connected to the Horizon Program to ensure compliance with the program, and shall review and approve all completed applications before benefits tied to the program are approved and granted to developers. And whereas the city has developed a Horizon Program guidelines and application with specific requirements that shall be monitored and administered by the Department of Infrastructure and Development in order to ensure that all information and submissions are correct and properly considered. Whereas the mayor joins with the city council in recommending the implementation of the Horizon Program and application process. And whereas the city's establishment of the Horizon Program hereunder is authorized by Section 9-324D of the property tax article of the Annotated Code of Maryland. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, Title III of the Salisbury City Code entitled Revenue and Finance be and hereby is amended by adding a new chapter, 3.25, titled Hotel or Residential Incentive Zone Program as follows. Chapter 3.25 Hotel or Residential Incentive Zone Horizon Program. 3.25.010 Definitions. In this section, the following words have the following meanings indicated. Multifamily has the meaning set forth in Title 17 zoning. Section 17.041.120. Hotel has the meaning set forth in Chapter 5.68. Subsection A, the Horizon Program is hereby established for the purpose of accelerating the construction or expansion of hotel or multifamily residential development in the Central Business Zoning District and Riverfront Redevelopment Zoning Districts. Subsection B, the city council hereby adopts the Horizon Program guidelines in the application submitted with this ordinance and attached here, too, and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, as the initial approved application and grants administrative powers to the director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development to process and monitor submitted applications in conjunction with the Department of Finance, to make necessary changes to the application for the Horizon Program, and to adopt such additional rules and regulations as may be necessary for the proper and efficient administration of the Horizon Program. Subsection C, an application for the Horizon Program shall be subject to final approval by a resolution of the city council. Subsection D, upon approval of an application for the Horizon Program by a resolution of the city council, the Department of Infrastructure and Development shall prepare a Horizon Agreement for execution by the applicant and the city. Subsection E, all real property tax credits received through the Horizon Program shall run with the land and be payable only to the then-current owners of the real property. Subsection F, the Horizon Program is hereby established for a period of 10 years from the date of final passage of the ordinance. The program shall be...excuse me, the program shall be reevaluated prior to the end of the third year. The city council may approve modifications to the Horizon Program and suspend or terminate the continuance of the Horizon Program at any time by resolution of the city council. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No questions.
I just have one comment. I think this is, this is going to be a significant boost to the tools that we have for development in our downtown area. It's going to take a lot of properties, such as parking lots, that are not on the tax rolls, and they will be on the tax rolls. And I'm confident that the properties that are, you know, being discussed and talked about, when they, you know, they're going to become productive properties and increase the value of a lot of the property that's downtown. Not only that, bringing, you know, beds and heads. That is a part of what is a key component to revitalizing. When the people come, more businesses will come. It's going to be a significant boost to our economy coming out of the heart of our city. So I'm in full support of this. And at this time, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving Ordinance Number 2669 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Passes four to zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2670 for second reading.
They're moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Heath, Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ordinance Number 2670, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury for the abandonment of an alley located between East William Street and Davis Street near East Main Street. Whereas Section 11-2 of the Charter of the city of Salisbury grants the city of Salisbury exclusive authority over all public ways located within the municipal boundaries of the city. Whereas pursuant to the authority granted the city under Section 11-2 of the Charter, the city deems it necessary and appropriate to abandon that certain alley located within the municipal boundaries of the city and between East William Street and Davis Street near East Main Street. And whereas the alley intended for abandonment by the city pursuant to this ordinance is more particularly depicted as all that area highlighted on the Glen Haven Platte dated May 10, 1926, and prepared by Hanneman Burrows Company, attached here, too, and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Whereas the city's abandonment of the alley hereunder will not affect any public access to public roadways. Additionally, a portion of the alley has been non-accessible for public ingress and egress for several years preceding the date hereof. And furthermore, any use of the alley has been primarily limited to properties located nearby to the alley. Whereas the city Department of Infrastructure and Development has provided prior written notes to all owners of property abutting the alley, informing each of them of the city's intention to abandon the alley and each of their respective rights and responsibilities as such portions of the alley abutting their respective property following the city's abandonment of the alley as intended by this ordinance. And all such property owners have responded to the city Department of Infrastructure and Development indicating their consent to the city's closure and abandonment of the alley. Whereas the city Department of Infrastructure and Development requests abandonment of the alley to ensure the owners of property abutting the alley can obtain ownership of such applicable portions of the alley if such owners so desire. Whereas upon the adoption of this ordinance, the city Department of Infrastructure and Development will provide written notes to all owners of property abutting the alley, informing each of them that pursuant to the city's abandonment of the alley hereunder, the city shall not be responsible for any maintenance costs, maintenance or costs associated with the alley as of the date of this ordinance takes effect as set forth here and below. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that pursuant to the authority granted the city under Section 11-2 of the Charter, the alley located within the municipal boundaries of the city and between East William Street and Davis Street near East Main Street, as more particularly depicted by the area highlighted on the Aforse Platte attached here, too, and incorporated herein as Exhibit A, hereby closed and deemed abandoned in its entirety by the city. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Section 6, upon its final passage, this ordinance shall not be codified. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No questions.
I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2670 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Angela, did you, did you vote aye? I didn't hear you.
I did. I'm sorry. I was on you. I apologize.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2671 for second reading.
Still moved.
Second.
Mr. Heath. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ordinance Number 2671, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2021 general fund to appropriate funds for attorney's fees. Whereas the city of Salisbury has projected the amount of attorney's fees expected for FY 2021. Whereas the city of Salisbury's projection indicates an increase of $15,000 in FY 2021 appropriations is needed for the account number 1700-513301, city attorney, in order to meet the projected amount of attorney fees for the remainder of FY 2021. Whereas the increase to appropriations for account number 17000-513301, city attorney, as provided herein, must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city of Salisbury's fiscal year 2021 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows. Subsection A, increase current year surplus account number 01000-469810 by $15,000. Subsection B, increase city attorney account number 17000-513301 by $15,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No questions.
None.
At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance Number 2671 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve ordinance Number 2672 for first reading. Mr. Sullivan?
Ordinance Number 2672, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the finance department to establish a project expenditure account in order to pay those invoices for Mitchell Landing Apartments that will be reimbursable through the Mitchell Landing Reserve for Replacement, RFR, account. Whereas the city of Salisbury owns the property known as Mitchell Landing Apartments. Whereas Mitchell Landing Apartments was constructed with partnership rental housing program funding received from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Administration. And whereas the DHCD/CDAs regulations require that all PR/HP-funded projects establish and maintain a reserve for replacement account in order to fund ongoing maintenance and repair costs and to enable the project to be self-sustaining. Whereas a maintenance issue has recently been discovered at Mitchell Landing Apartments in building 139, which will increase some invoices to be paid by the city and then reimbursed from the RFR account. Whereas DHCD/CDAs has provided written authorization for at least $20,000 in reimbursement from the RFR account for approved expenditures relating to this maintenance issue. Whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the establishment of this project expenditure account must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the city authorizes the establishment of the Mitchell Landing Project Expenditure Account in order to pay those invoices that will be reimbursed through the Mitchell Landing RFR account. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase DHCD revenue account number 12800-423300-76300 by $20,000. Subsection B, increase Mitchell Landing RFR operating expense account number 12800-546006-76300 by $20,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows. Section 3, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 4, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section...excuse me, that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance... of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section five. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No questions.
Questions, right.
None.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2672 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Four, nothing. Right, thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2673 for first reading.
No move.
Second.
Second.
And give that one to Ms. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ordinance number 2673, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $20,000 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for eligible expenses associated with the 2021 National Folk Festival. Whereas the City of Salisbury submitted an application dated April 29, 2020 to the Department of Housing and Community Development, a principal department of the state of Maryland, for a grant under the Operating Assistance Grant Program to provide the city financial assistance in carrying out community development activities, specifically assistance in conducting the National Folk Festival to be held in the city. Whereas in response to the application submitted by the city as aforesaid, DHCD has awarded the city grant funds in a total amount not to exceed $20,000, which said grant funds shall be dispersed to the city in accordance with and subject to the terms of the grant agreement by and between DHCD and the city attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit A. Whereas section seven dash, excuse me, whereas section seven dash 29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and approval of forfeits of the city council. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section one, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Salisbury the grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit A for the city's acceptance of grant funds in a total amount not to exceed $20,000, subject to the terms set forth therein. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase DHCD revenue account number 10500-423601-XXX by $20,000. Subsection B, increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXX by $20,000. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section three is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all their provisions herein. Section four is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section five. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No.
No.
Nine.
At this time, I'll call for a motion to approve ordinance number 2673. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. And we have one more. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2674 for first reading.
Still moved.
Mrs. Gregory.
Second.
Mrs. Blake. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mike, you want to read this one? Or... ordinance number 2674, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $12,708.50 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for offsetting COVID-19 expenses. Whereas on March 13, 2020, the President of the United States declared that the ongoing coronavirus disease 2019 pandemic was of sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant an emergency declaration for all states, tribes, territories, and the District of Columbia pursuant to section 501B of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Whereas in accordance with section 502 of the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, eligible emergency protective measures taken to respond to the COVID-19 emergency at the direction of or guidance of public health officials may be reimbursed under category B of the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Public Assistance Program. Whereas the City of Salisbury incurred substantial expense, excuse me, incurred substantial expenses preparing for and responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas the city submitted a project grant application to FEMA for funding to offset expenses related to the acquisition of personal protective equipment purchased in response to the COVID-19 crisis and the provision of additional fire apparatus and equipment to assist EMS units with transporting patients with COVID-19 or suspected of having COVID-19. Whereas FEMA, excuse me, and whereas FEMA funded assistance has been provided to the city at a 100% federal cost share rate resulting in the city receiving a reimbursement payment of $12,708.50. Whereas section seven dash 29 of the Salisbury City Charter, excuse me, prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the City of Salisbury. Whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the Council of the City of Salisbury. Now therefore, be it enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section one, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amend, excuse me, in the amount of $12,708.50. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows. Increase DHS FEMA revenue account number 10500-425120-XXX by $12,708.50. Subsection B, increase SFD medical expense account number 10500-546016-XXX by $12,708.50. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section three is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all their provisions herein. Section four is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any sub, excuse me, if any section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section five, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section five. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect from and after the date of its final passage. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President.
Any questions or comments from the council?
No questions.
I'll just say that everybody knows that Mr. Sullivan did that with one breath.
I was going to say, yes.
Call for the question.
All those in favor to approve ordinance number 2674 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. That's four, nothing.
Ms. Nichols, for purposes of the record, it was three breaths.
Oh.
[laughing].
That's it for our agenda. At this time, we have any public comments? We do have one. Pardon?
Yeah, yeah, I believe.
Hey.
Hey, Casey.
How you doing, Casey?
Good, how is everybody?
Good.
I apologize, I have family loudness in the background. Um, I did want to just pop in and ask for a update about the fortune telling permit?
Oh, was that?
The fortune telling.
Oh, okay.
Michael. I believe it's 5:28. Yeah, are we working on that still?
Certainly circle back with you all and determine the status of the legislation.
I didn't see Laura all the way back there. Laura, can you...
Can you give me a quick update?
Yes, please, please, please.
Okay.
We have the legislation and changes pretty much ready to go. They are in Julia's hands just for the final review, and then they will go over to Legal for your review. So they are coming, just waiting on some final review from Julia. So they're moving ahead.
Okay, good. Thank you. Fantastic. Is, I, I'm sorry, I'm really bad with timelines of city council and moving things forward. Does that mean like maybe August, September, we might be able to get them?
I think we could probably have it by, in front of council by August, depending on when Julia can get to it. I know she's been very busy, but again, it's just kind of a final review. Legal turns around things pretty quickly, so I think it would come in front of you guys by August.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I know Julia's taking...
And I can send you some of the, just the, what we're looking at doing, Casey, if you'd like, just the...
I would love to, and I do have another follow-up question. I know it hasn't totally been figured out yet, but something that we will be asking is when we can get the permit, can we do some of the steps ahead of time to be ready to get it like the day it's released? Because there's parts of different people's businesses that are just waiting on the permit, so we're kind of ready.
Um, yeah, I guess it depends on what parts you're thinking about. We pared down the legislation a lot, so some of those aspects were removed entirely. So I think it would depend which one you're talking about, so.
Well, I'll check it out and then we'll go from there.
Okay, I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
You're welcome, I appreciate it.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you, bye, everybody.
Bye, Casey.
Have a good night, thank you. Next up is our director of Greater Salisbury Committee, Mike Dunn, and a former Salisbury City Council President.
Mr. Vice President, thank you for allowing me to be here. Michelle, great to see you. Jack and Angela, good to see you. Few personal comments before I get started. It's always great to see Kim Nichols, Kim Truly, and Diane, thank you very much. Back in my day here, I agree, it was, it was that office and those folks who kept things going, so thank you. My compliments to the city attorney and his sense of humor and his speed reading skills, very impressive. So I'm Mike Dunn, the president and CEO of the Greater Salisbury Committee. I'm going to talk about Horizon, but first, Truly, I also serve as the co-chair of the National Folk Festival Fundraising Committee. And I'm very happy to report that virtually instantly, we had all of the money raised for this year. We exceeded our fundraising goal, and that's not because of the work of the fundraising committee, it's because of the extraordinary event that we put on. And so from that perspective, there are no monetary worries as we go into the 80th, and we're all looking forward to it. I was just at a funeral for an uncle. He had a great big full life, and that was up in suburban Philadelphia. I have eight family members so far who are coming down for the National Folk Festival. Also want to take the time, now that I'm here and we're on the back end of things, to thank the City of Salisbury and the members of the council and everybody involved for the extraordinary work to keep this city moving during COVID, during this pandemic, during a time when our mayor was serving his country a long way from home. Each and every one of you deserve credit. Julia, mayor, may not still be on the call, but she did a great job, as did each of you. So thanks for keeping our city straight and safe. Came tonight really to thank you primarily for the Horizon Tax Credit idea. That idea, I'm proud to say, took roots in the Greater Salisbury Committee conference room. There was a challenge. Julia and Andy came forward with some solutions. Your city attorney brought forward this legislation. I think it's worth reminding everybody that the Maryland House of Delegates, which gave the city and the county permission, right, to establish a Horizon Tax Credit, the vote to do that was unanimous. It was unanimous in the House of Delegates, it was unanimous in the state senate, and it was immediately passed into law by Governor Hogan. So whenever you get something unanimously passed on the political front these days with both parties involved, that says a lot. The Greater Salisbury Committee, and I am speaking on behalf of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce and Bill Chambers and their president and CEO. Our next step, of course, is to see if we can't bring this Horizon Tax Credit along with our county council and our county counterparts. It will do much better for all of those things that Muir, you just spoke about in downtown, if we can bring our county council along. That is scheduled, so we're told, to be heard on July the 6th on their agenda. I'm looking to Laura Soper, who's been helping, we're going to try to get some business, downtown businesses here to support that. But we thank the Salisbury City Council, the mayor, Julie Glanz, Michael Sullivan, for everybody just understanding that this is a key. And we do think it has remarkable opportunities for downtown. And so the subtle reminder for all of us is that Salisbury is in fact in Wycomico County. It is the heart of Wycomico County, it is the county seat of Wycomico County. And as Salisbury goes, Wycomico County goes. So thank you all for your support of Horizons. Thanks for all the hard work to really pull it across the finish line fairly easily. And now we look forward to your help in trying to have our friends from the county council and the county government do it too. So thank you all, have a great night, thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, appreciate it. Any more comments? Nope, okay. At this time, I'll go to administration comments. Was anybody still on from administration? I don't see anybody. Is it Andy?
Andy's on the road, looks like.
He's in his car.
He's muted.
He's muted.
Oh, you're muted.
All right, I'm back.
Hey.
All right, I'm not going to look at the camera, I got to focus on the road. I just want to comment on, we're having a great Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City. I'm on my way home from that, had some tremendous speakers, some tremendous insights on what is happening in and around Maryland. I echo all of the points that Michael Dunn said. So we are looking forward to moving forward as a community and then seeing what's on the horizon metaphorically and in just in reality. So we're just looking forward to what's happening next, looking forward to another great day of the conference tomorrow. And for those who don't know, our mayor, Jake Day, is the incoming president of MML. So we're looking forward to more of those group discussions and conversations statewide. So thank you.
Thank you, Andy, appreciate it. Start with Mr. Heath.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. As all of you know, we're going through a little bit of a heat wave right now along the eastern coast. And sometimes we forget that there are individuals who are out there who really don't have air conditioning and healthy places to stay. And if you are a neighbor of an elderly person, and it would, it would really be nice if you could check on them occasionally. I think it's, it's a good thing to do, and certainly I think they would appreciate it. So please do that. Second, please, we still need to get vaccinated. We are not at zero positivity rate yet, but the signs are very, very good. So with that, I hope you have a good week, and we'll see you next Monday.
Mrs. Gregory?
Uh, I just want to echo what Andy said about the MML. It's been great so far, a lot of really great speakers, learn a lot. It's been a lot of fun, meet a lot of new people. And I am, you know, really excited about the Folk Festival coming up. And I, I'm really looking forward to this year, especially since we weren't able to do it last year. So I'm really pleased to hear that we're, we're fundraising above and beyond. So other than that, just please stay safe. If you haven't gotten fully vaccinated yet, please go get that taken care of. We're still, we're still a little bit behind the stage, so we need to, we need to catch up. And, and try and stay cool. I know, I know my AC is going full tilt. I don't respond well to heat, I tend to melt, so.
Thank you. Just want to say, you know, echo what everybody's saying, really looking forward to the Folk Festival. I think one of the things people should keep an eye out for is some of the events happening down at the amphitheater. This past weekend, there was a concert down there, and when I drove by on my way home, there was a lot of people there, so they were, they were gearing up for it. So that's going to be a great use of that space, which is what we designed it for. So we're really looking forward to a great series of concerts this summer. Keep supporting our local businesses, and I know Angela had to jump off, she's at our Eastern Shore Association Dinner tonight. And as she would say, make sure that, you know, if you're healthy enough, give blood. We still need a lot of blood for the blood bank.